Good evening. I'll call to order the City of Arvada Housing Authority first. And Kristen Rush, if you'll do a roll call.
Chairman Williams.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Pfeiffer?
Here.
Commissioner Marriott?
Here.
Commissioner Morhamon?
Here.
Commissioner Simpson? Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Simpson from the Housing Commission meeting.
Very good. All votes are cast. Commissioner Simpson will be excused from this meeting. Next, we have the minutes of the regular meeting. It was pointed out by Mr. Morhamon that the copy we have does not have the names of who made the motions, but with that correction, does anybody have any other questions on the minutes? Seeing none, they will stand approved. Is there anybody that is here tonight to speak to the Housing Authority? We wear two different hats tonight. First is the Housing Authority and then is the City Council. I see no one. Okay, reports to the Secretary.
Good evening. The item on the agenda tonight is a resolution authorizing the Arvada Housing Authority to enter into Ralston Gardens LLC as special member and authorizing the corresponding execution of tax exemption certifications and housing assistance payments contract. And this agenda item is regarding Ralston Gardens, which is a tax credit-approved affordable housing development that will provide 102 units of affordable housing located at 58th Avenue and Garrison Street. Ralston Gardens was awarded low-income housing tax credits in 2022 for financing of this project. In support of their tax credit application, the Arvada Housing Authority agreed to become a special limited partner in the project for purposes of providing a property and sales tax exemption. The Housing Authority also agreed to assign eight Housing Choice vouchers with the preference that the vouchers are used for people experiencing homelessness. Services for these vouchers will be provided by the Arvada Homeless Navigation Program. Ralston Gardens is scheduled to close on this deal in May 2023 and must provide an executed special limited partnership agreement and an agreement to enter into housing assistance payments as part of their closing documentation. We have two representatives from Ralston Gardens Development Team here this evening. Lisa Humphries, I believe, is here in person, and Adam Morgan is attending virtually. Both are available to answer any questions that you might have, and if there are no questions, the team recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the Housing Authority to enter into a special limited partnership with Ralston Gardens and to enter into a housing assistance payments agreement for the housing vouchers.
Very good. Opening up for council questions in action. Mr. Morhamon, you're first.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I actually have two questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So I'd like to ask the team, the development team, to... The first question is, what's the annual value of the property tax exemption that this will grant you?
So the question is, what is the... What would the property taxes that the property would otherwise pay if the property tax was not granted?
That's correct.
Well, thank you for that question. Yes, and I'm Adam Morgan. I'm the... With Morgan Associates, I'm the tax credit consultant, working with the developers, Mile High Development and Brin Shore Development on this project. It's hard to say without having the exact numbers, but frequently, the property taxes on a project like this are between $500 and $1,000 per unit per year.
Okay.
And we've got a...
So about $50,000 to $100,000 annually?
Correct.
Okay. And then, second question is, what's the value of the sales tax exemption that you will realize in the purchase of materials to build this project?
That's another good question. I think that typically, you know, for a project of this size, is in the neighborhood of between $400,000 to $600,000.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, Mr. Morhamon, you may make your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that our HA 23-03, a resolution authorizing the Arvada Housing Authority to enter into Ralston Gardens LLC as special member and authorizing the corresponding execution of tax exemption certifications and a housing assistance payments contract be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. Thank you. Any other business to become before the Housing Authority?
No, I don't have anything further.
Very good. Thank you for always your good work.
Thank you.
Next, this is where we switch hats. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for May 1st, 2023, and call upon Councilmember Smith to begin this.
Yes, if you could all join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now, it looks like we have some scouts in the audience, so if anyone would like to come down and help with the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd love it.
That's not optional. You have to come down. If you want to earn this merit badge, you gotta come down.
The mayor's a little harsher than I am, I guess. All right.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Now, don't go away from the podium. You get to each introduce yourselves. Give us your name and what badge you're working on.
I'm Isaac and we're working on citizenship in the community.
Very good. What troop are you? Very good. Thank you all. Let's have their leader. Do you want to introduce yourself as well?
Oh, my name is Rob Bucknum, and I'm just here shepherding everybody here.
That's a lot of work.
My name is Brian Juge, and I am not working currently.
Thank you all for being here. It's always special. Okay, Kristen Rush, let's see if the same people are here. Here.
Here. Here.
Member Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Morhamon?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson? Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Smith from tonight's business meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Simpson. Close.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson is excused from tonight's meeting. Next, we have the minutes of April 17, 2023. Any changes or corrections? Seeing no requests, they stand approved as presented. We have a number of proclamations tonight. I'll begin with Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the opportunity tonight to read the proclamation for Poppy Month, and if those of you that are here from... To accept this from the American Legion, I'm going to read this and then come down and present it and give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you.
The poppy flower adorned the battlefields of Flandersfield in France during World War I and was looked upon by those serving as a living symbol of the fallen comrade's sacrifices. In 1920, after World War I, the poppies became the official flower of the American Legion family to memorialize the soldiers who fought and died during the war, and distribution of poppies became a Legion national program. Thank you.
Sorry, she's the only one that...
That's okay. Thank you. In 1924, to this day, thanks in large part to the American Legion auxiliary, the poppy is nationally recognized and mourned as a symbol of the sacrifices made by the men who served and died for their country during wartime. So now, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas the sacrifices of those who have lost their lives, their health, or their livelihood as a result of their military service are rightly the concern of all citizens, and whereas the annual sale of poppies by the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 161 offers an opportunity for people of this community to express their solitude for those unfortunate persons who have paid more than their share of the cost of freedom, and whereas the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of the disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of the deceased veterans in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that the month of May 2023 be designated Poppy Month in Arvada. Section 1, the Arvada City Council encourages all Arvada residents to participate in Poppy Month and to wear a poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude for the men and women of this country who have risked or lost their lives in fulfilling their obligations as American citizens. Section 2, the Arvada City Council recognizes the merits of the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 161 dated the first day of May 2023, signed by the mayor and all members of council. And I'll come down and present this, and then would love to hear from you.
Unfortunately, we only have one poppy princess this year, which is unusual because we usually have three or four, but so... But she seems to be doing okay.
Yep.
I'm going to read "In Flounders Field." "In Flounders Fields, the poppy blows, blow between the crosses row on row that mark our place, and in the sky, the larks still bravely singing fly, scarce heard amid the guns below. We are the dead. Short days ago, we lived, we felt dawn, saw sunsets glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in flounders fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe; to you from failing hands we throw. The torch, be yours to hold it up. If ye faith, break faith with us who die; we shall not sleep, though poppies grow in flounders field." Another one that the American Legion has found and sent around to all of us is "My poppy is red. A poppy to remember those heroes gone before. Red for the blood of the men and women shed in a foreign land, their lifeblood given for another as they took their stand. Black for death that comes and takes the breath of a hero away as they fight for freedom, fight for peace, fight to live another day. And evergreen to symbolize the memory will stay, the sacrifice will not be forgotten on this remembrance day. You wear a poppy to remember those heroes who fought and died. Red, black, green together, wear your poppy with pride." Oh, by the name. I'm Jeanette Scott. I'm the unit secretary for 161. This is...
Robin Riposa.
And she's our sergeant-at-arms.
I'm Charlie Dora, Vice President.
And I'm Mary August, and I'm historian.
So we have several of our officers, and then we have mom of... And this is my granddaughter, Leanne Scott, who is our poppy princess.
Very good. Good job.
Can I ask the poppy to come back, the poppy princess, to come back up and collect my donation?
And thank you.
That's right.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. We enjoy it every year. Next, I'll call upon Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Hey, Karen, do you want to come on down when the crowd moves? I think you're up next. I like the shirt.
Thank you.
Are you selling those?
The Arvada Visitor Center.
The National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 created incentives for individuals and organizations across the United States to preserve local historical assets, especially important structures that often stand in the path of growth and development. In Arvada, citizens act on this mandate. They collectively worked to place the historic Arvada Flower Mill on the National Register of Historic Places in 1975, the first such entry from our community. These citizens enjoy the effort and saw the need for more work to be documented, to document Arvada's history. They established the Arvada Historical Society to facilitate these preservation efforts 50 years ago in 1972. This example illustrates the long-term impact that individual effort can have to educate and inform current residents and future generations about our shared foundation that has enabled the community to grow and thrive over the decades. Preservation also has economic benefits, like the revival of the Old Town Arvada where the city was born. Historic preservation needs someone to care. National Preservation Month is your opportunity to care, to learn, and to become aware of local preservation efforts. Every citizen can play a role making historic history by helping to preserve it. I have a proclamation, and it says, "Whereas the National Trust of Historic Preservation declared the month of May as National Preservation Month, and whereas Arvada is a community rich in history, both physical assets and events that have shaped our lives today, and whereas preserving this history informs the community about our foundation, enriching current and future residents, and whereas the City of Arvada is committed to preserving our history as documented in the official plans and ordinances. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that May 2023 be designated National Preservation Month to acknowledge the importance of preserving our historic legacy and encourage citizens to learn about and contribute to our historic legacy. Stated the first day of May 2023, signed by the mayor and all of council."
Awesome.
So I'm going to bring this down and thank you very much.
Thank you for reading that.
Just remember how we look.
You didn't bring your official photographer tonight? Come on, Karen.
Thank you. My name is Karen Miller. I'm the president of the Arvada Historical Society. I'd like to introduce two board members, Kathryn Walter, who is our board secretary, and Lisa Crespin, who is a second-generation board member. You know, we were just talking the other day about whose job is historical preservation? Is it the mayor's job, the council's, is it the city managers? Is it ours? It's our mission, certainly, but is it our job? It's really everybody's job, and I think, as Mr. Pfeiffer said, it does take people to care. You do have to care, and we've done a lot of preservation, but we keep going. We are looking now at possible ways to redo the front of the flower mill without harming its historic status. We will participate in the Gold Strike Park Invision Project to ensure that the history that Lois Lindstrom brought to us with that park is in that plan, and we have our sites also on the teepee circles at the Blount Reservoir. Those are just a few things. So we need people to join us. We need more strength, more numbers. Historic preservation doesn't often take a lot of money or a lot of time. It just takes participation in some way. You know, last year, we spent the year celebrating our 50th anniversary as a society, and this year, we will be celebrated by Jefferson County. The Jefferson County Historical Commission, it will be awarding the Arvada Historical Society the Norman Ethel Myers Award, which there is one recipient per year, and that award is being granted to us based on accumulation of preservation efforts. In addition, the Arvada Flower Mills will be designated as a Jefferson County landmark, which probably should have been done a long time ago. And to complete the trifecta, our own Deborah Andrews will be inducted into the Jefferson County Historical Commission Hall of Fame. If you don't know her, she's a historical architect, and her and her husband own several properties in Old Town and other places, and she has been very involved in historic preservation. I thank you for the proclamation.
Keep up the great work. Next, I'll call upon Councilmember Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I get the privilege to announce the proclamation for Arbor Day, and I would ask Anessa James, who is our Director of Vibrant Communities and Neighborhoods, to come on down to accept the proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that May 11, 2023 be designated Arbor Day and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And it's signed this first day of May 2023 by Mayor Williams and all members of council.
Thank you very much. I'm actually going to turn it over to our city forester to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, everybody. I just want to say thanks to the councilmembers and mayor for all your support of trees over the years. Yeah, and...
I do want you to introduce your assistants.
Yeah, I got my daughter, Melody, here, and my son, Atticus, and Atticus just planted some trees with us on last Thursday for Bring Your Kid to Work Day.
That's great.
Future arborists here, hopefully.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. A little aside about Arbor Day. Years ago, when I was first on council, I had the privilege of reading the proclamation for Arbor Day, and as being a good CU graduate, I quipped that the only good thing to ever come out of Nebraska was Arbor Day. When I got home that night, my wife reminded me that she was born in Nebraska, probably the only night I had to sleep on the couch, so... Next, I'll call upon Mr. Morhamon.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor and privilege to read the proclamation for Provider Appreciation Day. We are going to designate May 12, 2023 as Provider Appreciation Day, and I understand we don't have anyone here present to receive it, but it will be mailed to Sarah Hewitt, representing the Angel Hugs Daycare in Arvada and the Jefferson County Child Care Association. The proclamation reads, "Whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas over half the children under the age of six nationwide are estimated to spend some time in a non-parental care arrangement on a weekly basis, which provides critical enrichment opportunities and nurtures development for children of all backgrounds and is a vital building block of our state economy. And whereas Colorado recognizes these hardships and has provided much-needed relief to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare, and whereas our future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that May 12, 2023 be designated as Provider Appreciation Day in Arvada and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work. Dated this first day of May 2023 by Mayor Mark Williams and City Council."
Next, I'll call upon Councilmember Lisa Smith.
All right. Is there anyone in the crowd that is going to be accepting the mental health proclamation?
I'm seeing a green ribbon, so that was kind of a clue.
That gave it away. Awesome. I wish I saw that. I didn't see that down there. All right, awesome. Well, it is my honor to read this proclamation as a social worker who's focused on a lot of mental health work in my past, so I'll get it started. "Whereas good mental health is essential to the overall health and emotional well-being of all children, youth, adults, and family, and it promotes healthy community, and one in five of our people in our communities experience a mental health condition each year. Whereas 16.5% of individuals in our communities experience substance use disorder each year, and an increased focus on the prevention of mental health conditions and substance use disorders among children and adolescents through screening and early intervention helps us improve lives. And whereas the stigma against mental health conditions and substance use disorders prevents many people from accessing care, and when mental health problems and substance abuse disorders are detected early and treated, people can recover and maintain a healthy and independent life. And the City of Arvada is dedicated to improving the health and well-being of all citizens by ending the stigma and focusing on the integrated role of mental health in all of our lives. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that May 2023 be designated as Mental Health Month and call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our communities and resources to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, providing appropriate and accessible services for all citizens, and making mental health a priority. Dated this first day of May 2023, signed by Mayor Mark Williams and all of city council." Thank you. I guess I'll accept this first.
All right. Thank you so much. My name is Taylor Klepper. I'm going to set this down here. I'm the Director of Navigation and Housing Services at Jefferson Center for Mental Health. On behalf of the board, staff, and clients of Jefferson Center, thank you for issuing this proclamation and recognizing May as Mental Health Month in the City of Arvada. Jefferson Center is a nonprofit community mental health center. Every day, we provide mental health care and substance use treatment, wellness services, and a host of additional resources to support the needs of nearly 30,000 people in our community. Through our centered program, we are partnering with the Arvada Chamber of Commerce to bring mental health information, education, and support to employees and employers here in Arvada. We are committed to breaking down the barriers that prevent people from seeking care when they need it, which means services not only in our office locations, but in more than 150 community settings, such as schools, medical practices, as well as partnering with law enforcement, homeless shelters, and more. We could not do this without the support of our community partners, so thank you all. Please, sorry, these last few years have stretched all of us. A recent poll survey showed that 61% of Coloradans experienced mental health strains such as anxiety, depression, loneliness, or stress in the last year. For our children, the need is urgent. We know that about one in five students live with a significant mental health problem during their school years, and suicide is the second-leading cause of death for children aged 10 to 24. Yet, only about half of the children and adults with a diagnosable mental health issue will seek treatment, either because of the stigma associated with mental health problems or because they don't know where to turn. This is why your support of Mental Health Month is so important. Together, we can increase awareness of how important mental health care is and where people can find support. Together, we can reduce the stigma often associated with mental health and substance use disorders, prevent people... That prevent people from getting help when they need it. When stigma fades, more people will seek care, and our community will become stronger and healthier. Jefferson Center truly values the support of the City of Arvada. Thank you again for recognizing Mental Health Month and for supporting Jefferson Center. We couldn't do all of this important work without you. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget your...
My ribbon.
Your ribbon.
Want to keep it? Thank you.
You'll need that for the next one.
I know, right?
And I'll call upon Mayor Pro Tim Jones again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the opportunity to read the proclamation for Building Safety Month, and I understand there's someone from the Arvada Protection District, and Justin Clark, our chief building official, and anyone else who wants to come up to accept this, please come on up. The month of May is recognized as Building Safety Month. The theme for this year is it's... The theme for this year is 'It Starts With You.' It encourages all of us to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. This is an opportunity to acknowledge building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry and the role they play in ensuring that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable." So I'll read the proclamation. And it goes, "Whereas, our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructures play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of diligent guardians. Building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the build environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play. And these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of a safe, sustainable, and affordable building that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, it starts with you, the theme for the Building Safety Month 2023 encourages all of us to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale each year. In observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by the local and state building departments, fire protection bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that the month of May, 2023, be designated Building Safety Month. And we encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities dated the first day of May, 2023, by Mayor Mark Williams and the rest of city council."
Now come down and present this to me.
Thank you very much. I guess we'll do this officially.
Sure.
Thanks for everything.
I guess I have to say some stuff. All right. Okay, yes. Thanks for the recognition and acknowledgement for the proclamation. This is Kylie Flynn. So she's one of our plans examiners. She was a huge, played a huge role in getting this implemented. So, you know, huge thanks to Kylie. You know, pay attention to social media because each week has a different theme. And specifically Week Two, because our assistant building official Nate Romero, he actually has an article featured on him that was written up by the ICC. So pretty big deal. That's a big accomplishment and super proud of this team. And yeah, thanks a lot.
Ms. Gillis, could you make sure we get a link to that so that we can see it?
We'll send it your way.
Very good. Okay, next we move to public comment. I don't have any sign-up sheets. Are there any members of the public that wish to address city council at this time? Seeing none, and do we have anybody on Zoom? Seeing none, then we'll close the public comment portion, move on to new business. We have three items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing Amendment Number Four to the Agreement between Arvada and PCL Construction, establishing Contractor's Guaranteed Maximum Price Number Four of the Construction Management General Contractor Agreement for pre-construction services for the rehabilitation and modification of the filter and solids handling system at the Ralston Water Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed $1,781,824. Second is a resolution authorizing supplemental agreement for license audit number 249836, covering pipeline crossing on Union Pacific Railroad property at milepost 23.8 on the Moffett Tunnel subdivision. And the third consent agenda item is a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Arvada and T-Mobile West Tower LLC, formerly VoiceStream PCS2 Corporation. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move the consent agenda items R23-040, R23-041, and R23-042 all be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast and that passes six to zero with Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution, R23043, a resolution authorizing the fourth revision to the City of Arvada City Council Strategic Plan 2020 to 2025. And City Manager Lori Gillis will present this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The red line attached to the resolution is the red line for the 2020-2025 City Council Strategic Plan incorporates the latest proposed revisions to the plan. We've incorporated what was presented and discussed at your March retreat. The changes primarily reflect language clarification in principles, results, and milestones, updates to dates to reflect changes in known timelines, and some organizational movement of results between work system. For example, between housing moved from VCN to community and economic development. I'd also draw your attention to Page 10, which provides a consolidation of organizational strategic advantages and challenges. Over the past several weeks, the drafts have been provided and changes have been discussed with council and modified to incorporate your input and feedback. The team recommends council approve R23043.
Open up for council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Go ahead and make that a motion if there is not.
You may proceed.
Just give me a second. Technology's not as fast as a hard copy over there, Mayor.
Some of us paper believers will.
Yeah, I move that Resolution 23-043, Resolution Authorizing the Fourth Revision to the City of Arvada City Council Strategic Plan of 2020 through 2025 be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also acknowledge Elizabeth Blythe, our Strategic Planning and Performance and Alignment Manager, for the work that she's put into pulling this all together, working with the department heads. A little bit of herding cats when you're pulling a bunch of information from 12 people, but she's done a fantastic job.
Great. Thank you. Next, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. For first reading tonight, we've got one item on the agenda, Council Bill 23-010. I move, I move that Council Bill 23-010 and ordinance repealing and reenacting Article Eight National Electric Code.
That's actually 13.
13, thank you. Thank you. Roman numerals got me that one. Section 18-570, adopted of Chapter 18, Building and Building Regulations of the Arvada City Code through the adoption by reference of the 2023 National Electric Code and the adoption of penalties for violations thereof, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing date set for May 15, 2023 at 6:15 p.m.
Motion for approval on first reading. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, because of the CML Conference, we have need to cancel the June 26, 2023 city council meeting. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we cancel the June 26, 2023 city council business meeting.
Motion to cancel. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 23-009 and ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Arvada, Colorado Sales and Use Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2023. And we'll be getting a presentation from Brian Archer, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to come talk to you about a proposed bond issue. And so we've got a short little presentation. It's not something that we do a lot of. I am joined tonight by two of our outside consultants, Maria Hardwood from Butler Snow and Amy Canfield from Steefel, if we have any questions. And then, of course, Deb Nielsen, our Deputy Finance Director. So if I say anything wrong, they'll jump up and correct me. So what are we asking for? We're basically asking city council to allow us to issue the difference between the voter-approved total of $79.8 million and what we actually issued in 2019 of $72.5 million. And that comes to about $7.2 million. Why are we asking? Well, since 2018, we've experienced a lot of things. Most specifically, a very large increase in costs. So that's the Colorado Construction Index. And if you summarize that from the start of Quarter One, 2019 to today, that's about a 76% increase. Obviously, we've had some redesigns on some of the projects, some unforeseen challenges, and then time delays. Ultimately, this ends up in dollar increases in both of our projects. And so you'll see our Ralston Road budget was about $18 million, just under $19. We're now up to about $22. 72nd Avenue at $64 million. We're now up to an estimate of about $93 million. So this is one of the funding avenues that we will use to fill in those buckets. This is just another way to see those increases. These charts should look familiar as they were presented just a couple of weeks ago. So that's the Ralston Road one. That is a 72nd Avenue one. You probably ask, why are we not looking at more of a detailed list on 72nd Avenue? As we continue to work with the UPRR through our final approvals, we cannot put together a complete detailed list. But once that is ready, we will bring it to city council.
For those who don't know, UPRR is Union Pacific Railroad.
Thank you, Mayor. How are we going to pay for all of this? One of the positives is since 2019, we've averaged an 11% increase in sales tax year-over-year. That is quite a growth cycle. As city council is well aware, we are required to put 20% of that into our capital fund, our 98101 Fund. And so additional funds in the 98101 Fund are about $2.2 million, actually a little bit more than that. And what we're asking for is to carve out $450,000 of that for 16 years, $1.4 million of the last four years to pay for this $7.2 million request. As you will notice, there is some additional dollars remaining between this carve-out and the $2.2 million. We are going to dedicate that to these projects as well. And we'll be coming back to city council on different ways to allocate those dollars. In the meantime, until we do that, we will be using cash from that towards each one of these projects. We're not increasing taxes. We're not asking for an increase in tax. We're just asking for allocating. When will all this happen? Tonight, we're presenting approval. Hopefully, we receive approval. We will then go to a bond rating call on May the 10th. We're going to do that with S&amp;P. We will hopefully receive a positive rating, go to a notice of sale on the 22nd, do a competitive sale on June the 1st, and then ultimately close on June the 15th. What is next? Hopefully, Ralston Road will be completed this year. That was the update we received just a few weeks ago. Still working on the final design, as was mentioned before. Once we have final budget, we will come back to city council and show how we are going to fund these two projects. Again, we are expecting to use the 98101 funds to possibly have to issue additional debt. We will be using some one-time funds through our general fund and other funds. And hopefully, through all of that, we'll be able to complete these projects. So there's a quick presentation. Any questions I can answer or the team can answer?
Why don't I take public comment first? Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I just have a question. If you go back one slide, given your timeline here, I know when we invest, we're not supposed to be trying to predict markets here. But is there any thoughts about what the economy looks like from now till the end of the year and timing these bond sales into favorable conditions for us? And do we have any thoughts on that?
It's a great question.
Or levels of confidence that we could possibly do that?
That's certainly something we've discussed with our outside experts. And part of the reason of going with this schedule is we would beat the June federal meeting in case, the FOMC meeting, in case they were actually going to raise interest rates again. But to your point, it's a possibility that they could go down as well. We do feel like we need these dollars a little bit sooner than later. So waiting puts that risk out there. So do we have to issue in June? We don't. But if we were going to wait, we'd probably wait a lot longer. So with the interest rate risk, we just feel like this is probably the best time.
Okay, thank you. And if there are no other questions, I'd be happy to make a motion.
See no other questions, you may proceed.
Thank you. I move that Council Bill 23-009 and ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Arvada, Colorado Sales and Use Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2023 be approved on final reading, numbered 4842, and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
Next, we have another opportunity for public comment. If anybody would like to address city council at this time, you certainly have the right and ability. Seeing no one rushing to do that, I'll close that public comment portion and open it up to any city council reports. Mr. Mormon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be having my monthly coffee chat on Friday, May 19th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Sweet Bloom on 77th and Wadsworth. All are welcome to come. And we'll discuss what's going on in the city and hear about your concerns.
Very good. Ms. Gillis?
Just to remind you, on May 8, we have an Old Town Reinvestment Strategy Workshop, which will be fun to hear about where we're at and where we're going. Also want to remind you that from 3:00 to 5:00, we'll be doing a pavement tour where you will see firsthand as far as methods and strategies for our pavement management program. I really encourage you. It will be super fun.
Will it be as fun as our sewer tour?
Close. It's close.
Just checking. Ms. Morris, do you have anything for us tonight?
Sorry.
You were just overwhelmed by the discussion of the sewer.
I was, thinking about the sewer tour. There's just nothing like it. But I have nothing to bring up today. I apologize.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all.